Good morning and welcome to the Medina County Board of Commissioners meeting for May 4th, 2021. We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our prayer for the morning. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligations. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
Steve, could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, move to approve the minutes of April 27th?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. I wasn't sure if you were saying yes to discuss.
Yes, yeah. Sorry.
It's all right. We'll move on into our resolutions. First up, we have Andy Conrad, our county engineer, and in the flesh, we have Andy Conrad.
Dan told me I had to come do this this morning. He was busy, so. We were ramping up for construction season, so we have a new hire inspector this morning. So he was getting her all suited up in her PPE and all that stuff, so.
So it's orange flower season, right?
Yes, yes, it is. So I have four resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first one is to close Ledge Road for a culvert replacement. The second one would be to close Magna Road for culvert replacement. The third one would be to close Neff Road for multiple culvert replacements. And the fourth one is a resolution authorizing our office to advertise for a multi-t township paint striping contract for the townships.
Move to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do. Just, we're closing a lot of roads. A lot of ones, I think we were just talking beforehand about the state routes that are being closed all over the place.
It is tricky this season.
Well, I was going to ask you, does anybody look at when we have all these road closings, plotting that up and also in time, to make sure that there is no, I guess, no area that's getting totally closed out with closures?
We, ODOT looks at their closures like four years in advance. And they ask us like four years ago for, are you okay with the closing at during, you know, 2021? Sure. And then 2021 gets here, and then we're looking at how of our projects, and we're jockeying our projects around their closures. We're trying to stay away from the Medina corridor, some things on 94 and Sharon. So we've actually, we had some road projects that were slated that we've actually taken some of those roads off of the resurfacing contracts this year just to allow people to try to get around. We understand that there's numerous closures this year. There's, ODOT has a huge emphasis in the county this year with their program, both resurfacing, bridge replacement, roundabout construction. So there's going to be a lot of work in the county this year, so we're being mindful of that.
Thank you.
I also think it's great that you've consolidated the striping project with the townships.
That's one thing that we've been trying to work with the township the last few years of, you know, what other services can we help you with? And there was kind of an outcry of saying that, you know, when we're looking to strip roads, you know, strippers don't want to come in and bid for 10 miles or 20 miles. So what we've done this year is we've put out to all of the townships, if you guys want to commit to striping whatever mileage of the road, we'll put it out as a township or a county project, and then you can just reimburse us. So we're bidding for half the townships or something that signed up for it.
In economies of sick ale, we may get a better price for all entities.
Part of the problem was the townships weren't getting people actually interested in coming in and just doing a little bit of striping. They want to do miles, so that's how they make their money.
Thank you.
Right.
Andy, do you have a map of all the closures and where they're going to be relative to ODOT's and what they're doing? Is there?
We do not have a map. We don't have a master map, a map on all ODOT's closures.
But do you have it on the county closures?
Ours are ever-changing. I mean, weekly. We try to, I know we have all the emergency services, and we put out the closure notices. The problem was, we've tried that in the past, but like yesterday's rain, that threw us off. So we were a little bit hesitant about putting out, especially for one day closure, saying it's going to be closed on this day where our guys, you know, they were only halfway, get a culvert swapped out and paved yesterday, so the road's closed again today. So we hesitate to say it's going to be closed this day and then open, because if we run into something, or if we nick a utility line and we're delayed a couple hours for Frontier to come out and fix it, or something along that lines, I hesitate to do that because then people say, I saw it on the map, it was supposed to be open today. So we try to, we have our advance notice signs up, letting people know that, you know, in a week's time, the road's going to be closed for this many days. But we tend not to put it out there on a broad scale county-wide, but the locals seem to know.
Yeah. And it usually is picked up by the papers.
Yeah.
So, okay. All right. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. And your weekly permit list is there.
We need to, roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Amy Lang Galvin, our Assistant County Administrator. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning. I am reading for three of us today, so I will begin with the finance resolutions. So there are nine finance resolutions for your consideration. The first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 2021 appropriations resolution by transferring appropriations. The third one is the creation of the local fiscal recovery fund and authorizing appropriations. We don't yet know when those monies are going to be received, but we wanted to have the fund set up so that we were in a position to receive those. They could come in as early as next week. The fourth resolution is the creation of a sheriff's office COVID-19 inmate housing fund and authorizing appropriations. The fifth resolution is authorizing the Medina County Drug Task Force Agency to accept a forfeiture vehicle to trade in with two additional county fleet vehicles towards the purchase of two newer model vehicles. The sixth resolution is declaring Medina County property as excess property. The seventh is approving the transfer of Medina County inventory between various Medina County offices. The eighth resolution is amending an approved expense for the adult probation department. And the ninth is approving claims for the week in the amount of $451,217.70.
Move to approve the nine resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're still up, Amy.
I'm still up. And so for the county administrator, Scott Miller, I will present the one resolution on his behalf. It's authorizing the 2021 participation agreement with the County Risk Sharing Authority, Corsa.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Corsa has done well for the county, I would say. So, roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
And then finally, for sanitary engineer Jeremy Sanko, he has two resolutions for your consideration. The first is authorizing the transfer of funds between various sanitary engineer funds and county funds. And the second resolution is authorizing change order number one. This is for the improvements being performed down at the solid waste district, 8730 building. Sites builders is doing that renovation, and they encountered some unforeseen building conditions during construction. So it increases their costs by $25,105.96.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next up, we have Nicole Lee, our Human Resources.
Good morning. I have one resolution this morning. It's approving personnel changes. Have one appointment change at County Home, eight rate increases, one at JFS, one in maintenance, one in sanitary, five at County Home, one leave of absence at sanitary, one return from leave at County Home, two resignations, one at transit, one at County Home, and one probationary removal at sanitary.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Let's do, we have two commissioner resolutions. I'll move those up on the agenda. So our first resolution is to appoint a representative to the Medina County Home Advisory Council, and we are appointing Deborah McCune for a term expiring August 19th, 2023. And the second resolution is appointing a representative to the Medina County Planning Commission for the term expiring December 31, 2024. And the person being appointed is Mike Stoffler.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. And we will move into our department updates. First up, we have Greg Brown from County Home.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning, Greg.
So with census starting out, we're at 39 residents. However, tomorrow makes number 40, and next week we should be to 41. So moving in the right direction. Since April 5th, when our ADC opened, we're now at two continual participants, getting lots of phone calls, and also doing interviews at the home. So that's up and coming. For staff shortages, the resolution that you just went for, thank you so much for the increase of our LPN's hourly rate. Make us competitive, and hopefully this will fill those two positions that I've been talking about so many times. Another resolution that you just approved, I hired a part-time second shift aide, got a two weeks' notice that one was leaving, and so that part-time said yes to the full-time position. So thank you again. For capital improvements, our one and only for this year was completed last week. It was a rewiring issue, so this summer will go smoothly with all our units in the windows for air conditioning. Internal improvements, our Quickmore system is now up and running. It went live on the 20th of April, so that's a great thing. Some of our collaborations, one of the newest ones is with Crop King, just kind of brought them back in. They were doing it prior to COVID, and they give us routine donations of hydroponically grown lettuce, excellent for the home. Also with the Adult Day Center, I have the Office of Older Adults and Medina County Public Transit, they're providing free transit for my residents, for any of the participants, and we've been working on that. Participating with Medina County Senior Services Network, doing some Zoom things with the residents. The Parks District helped us out. We're getting back to our roots. We've got a garden that we're doing this year. It's a 25 by 100, and they came over and plowed it for us. That was great. And then the Medina County Maintenance Department loaned us one of their extra, well, it's not extra, but one of their vans because for my upcoming events. This Sunday was the 19th Annual Medina Kids Care Benefits Horse Show at the fairgrounds. Excellent. It was their highest attendance for the year. I got, of the 19 that they've done, I had 23 residents that we got there. They enjoyed themselves. It was my first one, so it was really great being there and seeing, you know, seeing what she does.
It did weather, too.
But yeah, that breeze was brisk, but it really kept the, yeah, the heat down, so it was much appreciated. The 12th, we've got a ladies' luncheon. It's one we do every year for Mother's Day, something special for the residents. On the 18th, so I've learned more about peacocks here recently than I ever thought possible, but I've got a peacock coming in on the 18th, and then a peahen sometime in the fall. So I'll finally have the pair back in there by fall, but one is returning. The mid-May, we're then going to plant that garden that we've plowed up. Throughout May, we're finally getting out with the residents. They're going to go to some of the local parks and finally walk around and be able to get off property. And then in June will be then our men's barbecue for Father's Day, and that's where I'll put out a flyer to see if I have any male volunteers to get their be well point for helping out. Finally getting off property and going to Buckeye Woods this time instead of last year having to do it on the property. And then just COVID updates, not wearing masks, the residents, all visitation's been reopened, they're back down in the dining room, eating together again finally. Volunteers have been returning, provided that they've got both their vaccinations. Our beauty shop, Snips, is now reopened, and we've had our new stylist in twice now. So the hair's down, the beards are trimmed, got a couple colors in there, so we're doing great there. And then since I've been hired, I just had on the 28th of April, the first time my County Home Advisory Council actually met at the facility, at the home. So that was a great thing. And that's all I have.
Excellent. So I just thank Crop King for their donation. They're located down in Lodi, in the industrial park, and a good community partner, so.
Absolutely. They gave me a tour. It was amazing.
It is. It's a very, very interesting place.
Yes.
Yes. Is the community, the garden that you referred to, Greg, is that you're going to grow like vegetables, or is that the community garden for the butterflies?
This, we already, right, that one's always set up every year where soil and water will come over and establish that for us. This is for vegetables. We're doing, at a minimum, we're doing pumpkins, tomatoes, and Becky wants to do corn. We'll see how that goes. But the pumpkins will be neat because that's kind of something that we thought about giving back. We'll try to put some pumpkins out there at the front, free pumpkins from the home, just giving back.
Excellent. Very good.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Denise Testa from our planning department.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, Denise.
Good morning. So just a quick update. We have our May meeting tomorrow for the Planning Commission. We have two, one final, two final plats, actually. We have Windfall Estates in Montville with 40 sublots and 78 acres, and the Trails at Ridgewood Falls located in, oh, shoot, I didn't put that in my notes. I believe that's Hinkley, actually, with 22 sublots and 56 acres. So we're very excited. For our June meeting, we just exploded with agenda items. We have two preliminary plan extensions, one in Montville, one in Sharon. We also have a preliminary plan, Lakeview Pines in Montville Township. That includes 40 acres with 45 sublots. We also have Hickory Hollow Estates, which we just completed that preliminary plan in April. So there, or I'm sorry, the concept plan in April. And so the preliminary plan includes 24 acres with 20 sublots. Then we have Deer Hollow, final plat in Liverpool with 17 acres and 15 sublots. We have two map amendments, one in Medina Township, as well as Homer Township. So we will have a very busy month preparing for our next Planning Commission meeting. This month, we also have two concept plans this May. Blue Heron in Montville is extending Upridge Drive to build some villas, or villas, rather. So we're excited about that. And Rimrock Estates, and that is actually a 46-acre project. So we're very excited to find out more about them. Our subdivision work group is finally have all of our members, Rick Monroe from York Township, accepted a position. So we're very excited to launch that this May. Our public hearings for CHIP, our April public hearing has been completed. Our May public hearing is this Friday. And we've assembled a team of individuals from the county who we're going to meet with the Ohio Regional Development Corporation to learn a little bit more about CHIP and some of the opportunities for our county. I'm happy to report that the Brunswick Hills demolition is moving forward with our CDVG grant. Thank you to Heidi Carroll and Chris Kuznerak from Brunswick Hills. We were able to have those papers signed, and we're moving forward with the environmental review. Our Lafayette Infrastructure Critical, Infrastructure Grant, we will have a kickoff meeting very soon with a team from our county, including Lafayette, to be in, working on that. And I believe that is all, if that.
Sounds like you're busy.
So does anyone have any questions?
Denise, you have any idea how many lots we have added to Medina County in, say, the last six months or the last year?
Actually, I can give it to, if you're interested, I do have some figures since, for January, February, and March. I'm going to start kind of giving you that aggregate data on a regular basis. Right now, we've added a total with major subdivisions, 342 lots, just in January, February, March. With our minor subdivisions, which are our lot splits, we've added 33 new building sites. And it does not seem to be slowing down at all. And I know there's been a few questions as well about the Menards Project. So there have been a couple of articles in the paper about that. But yes, it just doesn't seem to be slowing down at all, which is great for business, I guess. And we welcome it.
We're a growing county, no doubt.
Well, I'm glad we're working on our subdivision regulations, updating it. So as we get this growth, we can obviously have a little bit more enlightened policies and work with the townships, obviously.
Right. I'm very excited about that, actually. We have two township representatives, and actually, even more of our members are from the townships, but the, our local township association appointed two individuals. We're launching with what we're calling our common sense revisions, which are revisions recommended by our planning department, just, you know, kind of some format and general revisions that just make sense. And then we're going to get into the more philosophical and in-depth discussion with our committee, or our work group, rather.
Are there any townships that are, and I think we approved a grant a few months ago.
With Harrisville.
Yeah, to revise zoning. Are any other townships looking at doing?
There have, I have spoken with a couple of townships, and actually, that was something Steve had mentioned earlier, or last week, actually. Gosh, it seems like it was this week, but it was last week, about maybe pooling or speaking with some of the townships to see if there is an interest with, and how many of them might be interested. So that's something that, but I know there's at least two that are interested.
Yeah. And Steve, you may know the answer to this question. Was it the commissioners that established the fund to allow them?
That's right. Yeah, actually, it was, we had a, that was when we were doing a growth management strategy, and the outcome of that was to suggest creation of this fund to assist the township, actually, communities, which mean townships, villages, and cities would be qualified to use that, when we'd go up to half. And the Planning Commission would oversee that and set the policies. You want to make sure that if you're going to add public money, and someone's going to do, let's say, a zoning or a comprehensive plan, that they actually follow through with it. So one of the commitments is that they actually follow through. You just don't do a, set it up there and don't follow through. So I think, so that was created a number of years ago, like 2020, 2002, maybe, or something like that. But that came as an outcome, a suggestion of the townships. And so they had our communities as part of that planning to create this fund to help assist in those. And it could be any zoning update, it could be a comprehensive plan, it could be, you know, anything dealing with land use planning. So I think the idea was to assist them as they were growing.
Right.
Very quick, not all townships were equally capable or able to fund adequate development plans.
Especially the master policy plans can be very expensive.
Yes. Yeah. And they were, some were hiring very expensive.
Very expensive.
Very expensive planners, consultants, and things like that. And with this grant, it enabled them to actually afford it, but also, but planning services expanded to assist them quite often to also do it. So sometimes staff could handle that. Sometimes bringing outside people, too, to help assist the components, and then paying half of it meant you were actually able to get quite a bit done for the dollar.
Right. And I think part of that support also includes the zoning maps. We've updated all of them, but one at this point. We're just waiting on some information. And as I mentioned to Steve last week, we also are vetting or investigating the opportunity to create a countywide zoning map as well, to help with economic and development. And so to help all of our county, to include the cities, the villages, and the townships. So.
It's been a number of decades since that was done. It was an attempt at one time to do it. And yeah, that was it. But of course, the zoning classifications have changed.
They have.
At one point in time, many don't realize that the county didn't have those zoning, and every township had their own repository of that. And several times, the prosecutor would complain, there was like three different zoning maps out there within a township, and each had the authoritative signatures. Nobody knew which was the correct one.
Right.
And so having central place for that, it makes sense to everybody, not only the townships, the county, but also the prosecutor, who has to, if they get involved in any kind of legal case.
That's right.
Need to go back to somebody that says, is this, is this really the zoning map I wanted to go into effect? Especially if you have issues of property being nonconforming and have to be grandfathered. So you have to know when the change occurred and so forth. So those legal issues made a lot more sense, obviously, for planning services to have that.
And the state made a very reasonable price for each township annually if they want to refile their zoning regulations at the recorder's office instead of per page. I think it's like $50. But we send them out a notice every single year to remind them that that's available to them to protect their zoning. Actually, they have it filed.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Any other?
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would be interested in that data, when you come back.
The number of lots.
The number of new lots and what's going on in the various townships. So I have one other notice here. This is a notice of a liquor permit filing. It is for Corner LLC, located at 729 West 130th Street in Hinkley. It's a class D5, and we're not going to have any kind of a hearing on it, so I just need to read this for the record. So before we go into discussion session, could I have a motion to go into executive session following discussion session to discuss the employment of a public employee?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hambley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. And now we'll go into a discussion session. Steve, do you have any?
Yeah, actually, I think all three of us were probably on the call last night or the webinar involving NOAACA, its long-range transportation plan, presentation of the, I guess it's supposed to be the final draft. And I know we were promised as of midnight that they would have the final draft available on there. I tried today to take a look at it. I'm still having problems. Well, it still says draft. I'm not sure if it's the final draft. And going through it, I've already emailed or sent them some of the comments on some of it. Some of the tables are unreadable, the headings, they use a dark color, and you can't tell what the font is. Medina's numbers were cut off in a couple of the tables. I mean, those are editing issues. And if that's the final draft, then obviously those need to be corrected.
Yeah, corrected. Others, they also don't, didn't paginate to the chapter pages. So you go into a chapter, you have no idea if you're going to make a comment. And before I kind of communicated to them, I'm not going to encourage people to go on and be frustrated because if they have comments about a specific section without a page, how do you know what
they're commenting on? And so I think they need to revisit it and edit it a bit, make sure to help encourage people to provide comments. And likewise, I, you know, in a sense, I appreciate the history of some of the sections, what I've been reading. And unfortunately, they're literally talking about, you know, the redlining of the 1930s and 40s and segregation policies and so forth, and kind of take us through basically the 20th century when it comes to basically a lot of issues in the development of Northeast Ohio, which is actually, is pretty interesting. Very selective, I think, in some of the information they provided. Very selective, I think, in some of the information they provided. But essentially, my impressions I get from it, they're still anti-suburb. I mean, it's, that was the tone I got from it and continue to be. In other words, if you're in the outer ring, you're basically, they're anti, yes, they're anti-migrate, people moving anti-migration within the region. They want to keep people, I guess, pretty much where they're at and not have that ability. Obviously, they have a strong bias against the highway system, the interstate highway system. They use that as, they, basically, that's their, they're faulting for all the, all the issues we've had, social and demographic issues, is the interstate highway system, which I find somewhat problematic. And likewise, it's obviously anti-automobile. There was a number of areas that I still want to make a comment about. They did a survey where, and I mentioned this, others, they were doing a survey as to where you would spend money for transportation, how much monthly would use the average person? And they have Medina County. And I wanted to look at that data, and I still couldn't find the individual data. But yesterday, I think it was like over $11 a month, Medina County residents would be willing to spend for a Hyperloop. And I have, for the life of me, can't imagine why anybody, for something that's not even real, hasn't happened yet. How did they come up that it fell in that line of what people would be willing to spend money on for a Hyperloop that connected us between Pittsburgh, I think, and Chicago?
Chicago.
And I don't, I don't remember, maybe I did take the survey.
And I think there was only 214 people from Medina that took the survey, so.
Yeah, and it was supposed to be representative sample, so that's why I wanted to look at that level of data. And I've yet to see, they promised those tables, I didn't see that there. So, there's a lot of that information. I guess I'm very much interested in exploring and understanding how they got the underlying information supposedly that is supporting some of these policies. But I disbelief that anybody would say that we could go to the ballot and say, okay, for 11 bucks a month, we can have this Hyperloop built. And especially when we're saying that it's going to be all private sector funding it, then why would we even put it as a question whether people think we ought to spend, that they would spend money for that? I mean, you can get a commitment for school funding for $11 a month.
Maybe the question is, is if you were going to use the Hyperloop, what would you be willing to spend to use it?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know that they have, at least from what I've seen, I have prognosticated on what the cost would be, say, if you wanted to get on it, whenever it becomes a reality, if it does, and get from Cleveland, because it would go through Cleveland and through Medina County, to Chicago or to Pittsburgh.
So, the other, like, yeah, for me, it's taking a look and seeing what the instrument, how they got that, how they got that number. Because that was in comparison to, how much would it be willing to spend a month for pavement repair and for, you know, bike paths and all these other things? Like, okay, that's, you try to have people evaluate what their priorities are in terms of transportation. That makes sense. But for that one, that's just kind of stuck out with me, is like, I don't remember that question, or it's kind of hard, how would you place it in terms of priorities? So, like I said, that's my impression so far. I think there's a lot of areas we need to obviously take a look at. It's a huge document, hundreds of pages, and there's a lot of information in there. I'm trying to...
The presentation, yeah, it just doesn't seem to, when you look at the next five-year plan, it doesn't seem to focus much on Medina County. You know, it's mostly focused in the north.
I noticed the hundreds of miles they're talking about building between now and 2050 of bike paths. Literally, they had it in that chart yesterday, and I don't know...
There was two or 300 miles of bike paths, if I remember right, over that.
Yeah, they did it over a couple of decades and so forth. So, it's like, the question I have is, are those going to be added to as we expand the highway? Are they separate? Are they recreational and so forth? I mean, they, she even had a picture of somebody bicycling in the middle of winter. And I have yet to see anybody in, at least in Medina County, dare to bicycle during the winter.
Actually, some of the bike Medina County folks do.
They do?
Bicycle all year round.
I can't imagine.
And they have been stressing in trying to develop plans. In fact, they worked with NOAACA to come up with a map, not only Medina, but all the counties in NOAACA, of all the bike trails and bike routes throughout the county. So, I think people would do it.
How would we plow them?
Well...
I'm just asking.
You know, I think it's maybe different in different parts even of Medina County, because up north, they get more snow in the northern part of the county than they do the southern part of the county. And there would only have been, really, this year, a couple of weeks that they would not have been accessible.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure you'd have to plow them, but you know, when they are available naturally, I think that folks would use them.
When you've gone to the NOAACA board meetings, have you gotten the indication what the other three counties, Lake and Jaga and Lorraine, think of the five-year plan?
Interestingly, I've had some conversations with a couple of commissioners from other counties, the rural counties, that appreciated the Medina County letter and share some of the sentiments that we have. Because I think the plans that we have seen have been very Cuyahoga County-centric. And granted, that's where the majority of the population of the region is, in Cuyahoga County. But, you know, the overall plan is predicated on fairness, equity, and lack of bias, lack of favoritism. But it seems to be skewed toward Cuyahoga County.
Well, I know that they say the lack of bias and favoritism, but obviously, they're implicit in it.
Yeah.
You're making choices as to where you put money.
Right.
Would you put money in? I mean, there's that, they've added traditionally non-transportation components in the long-range plan. I mean, access that have nothing to do with the highway, but just access for pedestrians that are going to track funding for some of these. So, you're kind of like, okay, how does that all fit into it? I guess it comes to the question, and obviously, that's money you're not going to be able to have spent, be able to spend on other things. I guess they're going to spend, I just made a note of it, I forgot, $5 million on future planning for the rails, I guess? Grace announced that last night. Is that a decision of the board?
But I do remember her commenting about planning for rail expansions and the cost of the, you remember, they had a map that showed rail coming down to Medina County and going off up into Lake County.
Sure, sure.
Some further extensive, and she said it would be a, I believe, a $15 billion investment to do all that. And at the end, Randy Lane commented again about it and said that this was a nice-to-do program if they could do it. But I don't...
So, it's probably as likely as the Hyperloop?
That's the sense I got, yeah.
Yes.
So, but she, but she definitely said that we'd be spending $5 million early on for the, at least it seemed to be. It wasn't just one of those illustrative plans. She was saying that $5 million we're going to be spending here in the near future for extension of the rails.
Well, I think just for planning.
For the study.
Well, yeah, yeah, for extension of rail planning.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't remember that exact comment, but I know that there were some thoughts on looking at rail as a, one of the intermodals to transport people and goods, as they said.
Yeah. Well, like I said, as soon as I continue to get through, I just want to make sure it's the, maybe I have to, we have to email Grace to make sure that the plan I'm reviewing is the one that they're talking about, the final draft.
Right.
Because I can't, I couldn't find the tables.
The other interesting comment, Steve, that I thought, and this was not from this meeting, but from when Grace was here, is that that plan is an updated plan from the original plan that was done for NOAACA when NOAACA was created back in the late 60s, early 70s. And it would seem to me that after, you know, 50, 60 years, that maybe we ought to look at an entirely new plan.
Well, actually...
As opposed to updating...
Absolutely.
A, an old plan that, you know, is predicated on, you know, the 1930s, 1940s, 1950s, on historic trends that, you know, this is the 21st century, and we're 21 years into it. Maybe we have a...
And not just transportation has changed over those years since the 60s, economic development has changed, too, and they need to reevaluate the whole thing.
I would agree. I know we've asked others in our departments to come up with a list that people have concerns and things, the items specifically in the plan that we ought to be asking for either changes, modifications, or improvements or clarifications. And the trouble, like I said, the trouble is, is now it's asking for public comment with some of these issues involving editing that really need to be taken care of. Pagination and unreadable column headings.
So, I thought Grace said that the plan would be available...
At midnight, last night. And I looked at this, I was looking at this morning and early this morning, trying to read it. And that's, like I said, I started, just went on the website, went on there, here's the E-2050, here's, and it says final draft, so I'm presuming that's the final draft. But, and I didn't see any email or anything to the board members that this is the plan, here's the link.
Yeah, I've not, I didn't see anything before this meeting, so.
Yeah, I did, I looked, too. I did. That's why I tried to just download what there is. But I think if you really want public comment, you got to make sure it's an editable form that people can actually comment and make comments about, not just in general, but specifics. Because there is a lot of data in there, a lot of citations. I was chasing down some of the footnotes and so forth, just to get, you know, get the understanding. Like I said, a lot of the work they had on the segregation of our region was built on a paper largely focused in the 1930s and 40s. Redlining, they showed maps and so forth and that, which is, I mean, there was a paper, just working paper just last year, but was focused on all, as you know, in banking, there's a lot, been a lot of regulations since the 19, since World War II.
And insurance.
And insurance, dealing with these issues. So, it doesn't even recognize the, really, the systematic changes to address these issues. And that's why I said there seems to be a, like, a focus on going back to the 1960s and prior, and kind of ignoring what happened the last 50 years.
Right.
In terms of what we've done to overcome it. And there's even a more recent study, I know I've shared with Denise and with some others, involving, most recently, looking at segregation, looking at, they call it diversity index, within our region, just came out last year, because there was some underlying studies that were done just before I left, involving fair housing practices and so forth, and classification of our counties within this region on that. And I've yet to see that referenced even in this report. So, you have a more current study that didn't get included, that causes me some concerns, is to take a look and go, okay, what are they not including and why aren't they including? Some of these, they really do speak to the things that have been accomplished in this region, dealing with racial equity, dealing with segregation, dealing with racial equality as well as gender equality and so forth. I mean, things have gone on, even within this county have been remarkable. So, without addressing that, it seems like it's a very, very narrow focus, which means, like I said, it seems to be very anti-suburb.
Right, right.
But at least that's the tone I seem to get from it. But I know we probably editorialize more than, on a discussion level.
Well, once we see the actual draft of the plan, we can talk more about it.
And we, I think we still could, ought to encourage the public to log on to NOAAAC on the website and make comments if they have some concerns. That's the whole idea. This is the, now, the one month that the public has the ability to make comments relative to all these issues, transportation, land use planning, and so forth. So, I think this is the time we need to encourage people.
Right.
I do. I'm going to pass you each something. We have that huge project coming down 18 ODOT. It's actually going to be several years. It's going to go into 2023. So, the excavator for the project, to make sure that we have a safe staging area each evening for equipment and whatever else might be needed for the project, is looking to potentially rent a piece of property from us for the project. Amy was gracious enough to look at all the properties that we own in the area. And as you can see, we do have an actual backyard, two kind of property, I've greened it out, that potentially could be used as a good staging area for the project. So, with your permission, I'm going to look to negotiate an MOU with a reasonable rent rate for this property so that our people have a safe place to stage for the two-year period.
I'm good with it.
You okay?
I think it makes sense if we can accommodate it and keep it off public streets and...
Is this technically where we lease it to ODOT, and then ODOT allows it to be used for the storage for the project? Or this is...
This is the excavator.
Well, I, well, that's why I'm asking. So, is this the technicality of it? Whether that involves specifically with that contractor, or is ODOT somehow involved? Where, I mean, when they did the project, where was this equipment going to be stored under, when they were bidding it and so forth?
I don't know. That's a question I'd have to ask the excavator, because it's the excavator that I talked to.
Well, I know, I know.
Right.
So, I, but I guess, ODOT is the one that manages the project, correct? And they're the ones that are involved with making decisions about these kind of things. So, as long as they're in the loop, I guess, is the reason I'm asking. As long as they're in the loop, and they're, this approves this, and I just want to make sure that, obviously, technically, this, you know, this is in compliance with the Fire code regarding, you know, the use of public property.
Okay.
Otherwise, no, I'm glad you're doing this. Anything to make that corridor safer for people going and back and forth and keeping the heavy equipment off of that.
Off the street at night.
Is really good.
And also, whatever MOU we write up, I'll make sure it's run by the prosecutor.
Yeah, but like I said, I thought, like I said, what I only thought was making sure ODOT's in the loop, too.
Yeah, and I appreciate it. Amy's involvement was to find a property that was, was safe. And this is a county road, so I showed it to Andy. And, well, his one concern was to make sure the people involved with the project understand that trucks aren't allowed to go through the footroad. There's an ordinance, so it would just have to be to here. You know what I mean? They couldn't go, right, right.
Well, on the back end of the south, there's a development.
Right, so, yes, so...
They'll be cleaning it off as well.
Yeah, so there is an ordinance prohibiting trucks from going this way, so we just stop here for the evening. But I'll address all your concerns and make sure the excavator has ODOT in the loop, but I will, whatever we come up with, I'll run it by Forest's office.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wissowski during the weekly call. So, we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So, at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for the updating.
Thank you.
Sorry, I must remask.
Do you have anything? John? No. Denise, anything for her? Well, then I think we will go into executive session. It is 10:15. Well, then I think we will go into executive session. It is 10:15.
We are out of executive session as of 10:43, and we are ready to adjourn?
Yeah, move to adjourn.
Second.
Will Coughlin?
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Thank you. Have a great week.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for the update, Amy. Thank you.
Sorry, I must re-mask.
Do you have anything?
Do not.
John? No. Denise, anything further? Well, then I think we will go into executive session. It is 10:15. We are out of executive session as of 10:43, and we are ready to adjourn?
Yeah, move to adjourn.
Second.
Will Coughlin?
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Thank you. Have a great week.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for the update, Amy. Thank you.
Sorry, I must re-mask.
Do you have anything?
Do not.
John? No. Denise, anything further? Well, then I think we will go into executive session. It is 10:15. We are out of executive session as of 10:43, and we are ready to adjourn?
Yeah, move to adjourn.
Second.
Will Coughlin?
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Thank you. Have a great week.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for the update, Amy. Thank you.
Sorry, I must re-mask.
Do you have anything?
Do not.
John? No. Denise, anything further? Well, then I think we will go into executive session. It is 10:15. We are out of executive session as of 10:43, and we are ready to adjourn?
Yeah, move to adjourn.
Second.
Will Coughlin?
Hamley?
Yes.
Sweater?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes. Thank you. Have a great week.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those two agencies that had expressed interest, not to the degree that would warrant a clinic. So at this point, we think we're just going to be able to work directly with the Health Department, see if we can encourage them to coordinate an appointment direct at the Health Department.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else?
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up with the vaccination supplies for the COVID vaccines becoming more readily available. Colleen had had a conversation with Krista Wasowski during the weekly call, so we did an inquiry to see if there were any county employees that hadn't yet been vaccinated that were interested in a clinic, and we had a very low response. I would say there were only two agencies and just a handful of folks at each of those